7:02, I'm going to bring the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, March 4th, 2021. All three selectmen are present, our administrator is present, Chris Remalab, in fact, Chris Remalab is present, and Woody Bone is present from the Transfer Station Department head. And we have our town moderator here tonight as well. Leo will be recording these meeting minutes for the benefit of the public, and Lynda Nickerson will be uploading to the town website and to YouTube. Okay, old business, I've got some old meeting minutes here.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 25th as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, these meeting minutes have the discussion a little bit from last week.
Okay.
And Brian, we gave him some paperwork back for your department from last week, but these meeting minutes probably would be good to attach to that.
Sure, I'll put them in roll call. Thank you.
Bob, you want to do the non-public?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes of February 25th as written.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna open up for a quick public comment next. Anybody else okay? Going to town business, we're gonna do the, I guess Don's not here, so we'll go right to...
It's actually in the mailbox, that's what it says.
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay.
We'll go right to the town moderator for discussion on the upcoming election.
Okay. There's been a lot of preparation that's already completed. Jeff Trexler of the school board and I measured out the space at the community center.
Yep.
We looked at setting the room up somewhat differently than we have in the past in terms of where we put the board and where I will stand and where the public will be. Doing that and preserving wide walkways all the way around, we think we'll be able to have 90 chairs set up in, with socially distance, in groups of one or two. There may be...
Not using the bleachers?
We won't, we'll not be using, it's just too complicated and it breaks up the walkway too much.
Yeah.
So, you know, some people will be, who live together will want to sit together and that'd be fine, and if there's a bigger group than that, they'll be able to pull chairs from nearby and not disturb the six-foot spacing. So, that was encouraging, 90. Jeff Moody of the school board has been working a lot over the past couple of weeks to help ensure that there will be able to be a linkage for video and audio between some classrooms and the community center.
Uh huh.
In case we have more than 90 come, or in case we have somebody come and refuse to wear a mask, because to be in the community center, you're gonna have to wear a mask. But, but if you refuse, we will be able to have those people up in the school, in one of the classrooms.
Is it gonna be more than one classroom in case of overflow?
Yeah, and we're set up for three and we could do more if we needed to. I've also spoken to a couple of people in town who are, were quite concerned about coming to the meeting for health reasons, even with the precautions that we're taking. And I talked to them a bit about maybe we could open a classroom that would be very sparsely populated, there would have to be an assistant moderator there, but maybe we could do that to help accommodate them. I think at least one of them has been in touch with your board as well, and I just, I just found that I could understand his being upset, but I thought he was also pretty gracious about understanding that we're doing, we're trying to be responsive, and if it's not enough, you'll just have to do what makes sense for him.
He made a follow-up email and it was very gracious.
Yeah.
And I thought was, he was very understanding, I think after he chatted with you.
Yeah, he actually thanked the board and your group of people for doing the best they could with this COVID situation.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of different responses to COVID, from some people who don't see it as an issue at all, to some people who are so fearful of it that they're not leaving their houses. And my, my own feeling is that we can't say definitively, this is how much risk you have, this is what it's gonna do to you, because we've seen that, the different people get sick in very different ways, a lot of people have died. So, I guess my thought is, we've gotta find a way to be responsive to the whole range of level of concern as best we can. So, we'll do that as best we can at the, at town meeting. The, the equipment to link the gym to the classrooms, it's, they're using that system in a way they've never used it before. The school has gotten some new hardware to make that possible, and some new software to make that possible. And the software, from what I've seen of it in action, is a little touchy, and so the schools, they've got a person on staff to deal with the technology stuff, Sarah, and I don't know Sarah's last name, but she...
But they are bringing in on the school meeting, the additional person.
Sarah will be there, and also the consultants they've used to help them upgrade their software will be there.
Now, on our meeting, are we gonna bring that consultant there as well?
Well, that, that'll be up to you, but I talked to her about it and I know that she's willing to come.
I think, I think it'd be a wise idea myself, I don't think we should have a glitch in the middle of a, a town meeting and...
Yeah, and actually Clem's already stepped up and said the school will absorb it this time, because it's not a lot of time for the meeting.
Oh.
That is, that is not what I was told.
I wasn't either, the additional staff...
Well, no, it's standing there, it's what I heard from Clem, and the fact that it was coming out of the same pocket, so it didn't make a difference.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna break it down a bit, they are spending a lot of money to get the system up and running.
Yeah.
To have Sarah come on Tuesday night, my understanding is that, that piece, paying, I think, whenever they have an hourly employee come out on a time that is not their normal work time, they've got a minimum number of hours that they will pay them. You guys do the same thing.
Three hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a state law.
So, for the three hours for Tuesday night, my, my understanding was that, well, maybe it's that they would appreciate it if you would reach out to them and be willing to pay her for her time that night.
I don't think it's a problem paying, like you said...
I don't have a problem either way, I'm just explaining what Clement said to me was...
Clem said the same thing, I was there.
And I, I believe it, I just think it'd be a, a nice handshake.
You know, I think it makes it a lot easier if one is paying, and we can reimburse them if, if that be the case, you know?
Yeah.
We don't have a problem, just ask them to...
I'll reach out to Clem and ask him that, like you said, we can reimburse him out of our funds if he wants us to, but the, like you said, it is the same wallet they're eventually coming out of.
But at the same time too, it makes it a lot cleaner to do it that way.
It does, yeah.
I talked to Dwayne Ford at the school board meeting last night, and he said it would be best to work that out, the details of that out with him. So, I called to him at the SAU.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to have our volunteers here as well, but, you know, the school offers, obviously the more they learn about it next year, hopefully if we have the same setup going on, they don't have to relearn it, but...
Yeah.
I think that, you know, this may be a system where we always have a room upstairs afterwards for people that are susceptible to something.
Or overflow.
During town meeting.
Yeah, their, their bathroom needs overflow to their house.
But, yeah, I think, I read your email there and I read Clem's email, and I thought that it'd be prudent for us to pay whatever fee it costs.
I think, I think it'd be a nice gesture, good. So, Jeff Moody will also be there at town meeting. We'll need somebody kind of at the system in order to, basically to recognize one of the rooms if someone wants to speak from a classroom and the like. We'll need someone at the computer to be helping to, like a switchboard.
To facilitate communications.
What's that?
To facilitate communications.
Yeah, yeah, and he volunteered to do that. So, my thought about setup then is that on Monday at four, we'll set up half the gym that will include the tables for selectmen and town clerk and a podium for me. We'll set that all up on the far end of the gym and have chairs set up for half the gym, and then set up the voting space so that on Tuesday at seven, people will already be seated when it's time to start the meeting, and we can take down the curtain, we can move the curtain back and have the crew take down the voting stuff and put more chairs up.
So, instead of walking di...
So, we'll be able to start the meeting pretty close to seven.
Instead of walking diagonally, will you have to follow the curtain then go out?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we can set up a certain amount of chairs?
Yeah.
And then we can just follow suit with that right up to the end?
Yeah.
Hopefully it's gonna be a quiet, quiet thing.
Yeah, I, I kind of expect it will. I know that the Secretary of State's office has given moderators more leeway than usual with how the setup goes, including fewer voting booths. So, we'll be able to have a simpler setup that will be simpler also to take down. So, my hope is that, that will be pretty seamless, and we'll just move from ending the voting to, you know, five minutes later maybe, hopefully start the meeting.
Have you talked to Woody about time, setup time, 4:00 PM?
No.
Lee? Woody? I need to see. He's skinny back there.
So, what do you think about setup time, 4 o'clock on Monday?
Is that the earliest we can get in?
Uh, I can check...
The only reason I say is I have a class that I need to be at, like shortly after, at 6:00.
We ran into that before.
Right.
Uh, let me, let me talk to the school and see what they say.
I mean, if I am late for class, I'm late for class.
Yeah. The, the after-school program, oftentimes we try to split the gym with them while we're setting up, but we won't be able to do that this time, because we're gonna be setting up the whole gym.
I know in times past, they've put them upstairs, which maybe is an option this time.
I'm talking to Owen about that, and hopefully we'll get that squared away. But if that's true, yeah, maybe, maybe we can be there earlier than four. So, if it's okay with you all, I'll just communicate directly with Woody about that, and we'll, we'll get a plan.
Do you have my number? Can you text me?
Okay. I think I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. On that day, when people are approaching the mic or asking us questions from the other, will we be able to view the people or will we just be, you know, just be listening to their questions?
Um, the, yes. What we're setting up, if it all goes as smoothly as it can go, the big screen will be down.
Yeah.
The person who's speaking in a classroom will be broadcast onto that screen.
Okay, nice.
Yeah. And, and whatever is going on in the gym will be broadcast back to the classroom.
But at this point, the room's gonna be, for the exception at this point, overflow, for non-compliers with mask wear?
Yeah.
And that's it at this point?
Um, yes.
Okay.
It may well be that we have nobody.
That's what I'm, I'm being optimistic and being hopeful, maybe none.
Yeah.
That would be a big, one page.
If you get one person doesn't wanna wear a mask, and there you go.
Yeah.
One room.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm also in the back of my mind thinking about all the things that could go wrong, and if there is someone who is determined that they're not gonna wear a mask, or for health reasons deals that they can't wear a mask, and the technology doesn't work as well as we need for it to, I may, my first thought may be to ask the assemblage if they would be comfortable with having people without masks sitting in the back of the room, if there's enough, if they feel there'd be enough distance with that. So, that's a possibility that they come up to.
So, flexibility is your key word.
Uh, up to a point. I, I am extremely reluctant to disenfranchise anyone, no matter what their level of concern about COVID is. It's not a problem, or it's life or death for them. That's, you know, I think we wanna make it available to everybody who wants to come as best we can. And if there's something that comes up that interferes with that in the middle of the meeting, then I, I'll have to think long and hard about postponing the meeting.
Monday, the 15th? Is when Woody's gonna do the setup?
Yeah.
Monday, the 18th.
We're, we're hoping for before town meeting.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That would be good.
All right, let's make it a week off, we'll get less...
You know, and attendance at town meeting will be really light.
Yeah. Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a question for you, Randy.
Yeah.
If you're gonna have people seating in the back of the room without masks, what's that distance gonna be?
Uh, you know, it's, it's something that's in the back of my mind that I'm holding on to as a possibility for worst-case scenarios. If we've got attendance in the gym of 80, it's not, it's not gonna be enough space to the back of the room, so it won't be possible.
Right, but I mean...
But if we got 10 people sitting up front, and we've got one person without a mask...
Oh, okay, I'm just wondering because, you know, you wear a mask, I don't wear a mask, and we're told to stay six feet apart.
Yeah.
Then everybody's in the back without a mask coughing and sneezing and everything, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm, I'm really hoping there's not a whole lot of that.
But, but you know what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
So, it'd be a shame for the people who are being careful to be suffering for the people who don't really care.
There's a, a big judgment call, and it won't be minded alone, it'll be something that the assemblage will make a decision about.
Okay.
And if somebody says, "No, I'm not comfortable," okay, we're not gonna do it.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
Is that gonna be a majority or just one person?
Um, you know, I, I, we're not there, I don't know. I'm hoping that we can work well together. We'll see what we get to.
Play well together.
But at the same time, because as, as moderator, I, I believe you have the authority to make the final decision regardless of what the public says.
Yeah.
And so, I put a lot of credence in what your decision would be, and I'll, I'll be supporting you regardless of whether I like the decision or not.
Yeah, well, thank you. Not being able to anticipate what the conditions will be at the time, you can't make a decision yet. I, I guess what I wanted to bring up was that I'm gonna try to be as flexible as I can in order for us to get the meeting in on Tuesday. But there may be conditions that set it up so that we can't do it safely, and we'll have to postpone.
Because when we were having public hearings, for example, if we were, had an overflow, the only option that the chair had was to cancel the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I...
Yeah, this room doesn't give you much flexibility.
No. And so, that, we were really concerned about that.
Yeah.
And public hearing went well with the, with the attendance, but I'm, I'm concerned there too, because you have 10 people come in and say, "I don't wanna wear a mask," and the thing is, then you have 80 people there saying, "Well, we're wearing masks," and saying, "What, what gives?" Everyone takes off their mask and we're, we're at ground zero now.
No, no. And, and I'm trying also to keep my, keep myself in perspective, I don't, I can't anticipate that we'd have 10 people who say no to a mask, that wasn't our experience.
Correct.
At the, at the federal election, we had...
Numerous number of people.
How many? 14, 1,400 people came through, and there were four. And one was on medical grounds, so, yeah, yeah. I think, I think we're gonna be fine.
Okay.
But I don't wanna test Murphy's Law, I'm ready for anything.
Anything else from our town moderator?
Um, no, that, I think that covers it, you know, we'll, we'll be setting up in a different way, Woody, so there may be a little bit of confusion as we get started with that, just like there was in November, but, but hopefully we'll get through it pretty quick.
I do know that those stand-up tables really seem to attract the people to them, they really work, well, the taller tables, they can walk right up to. I think that, you know, if we're gonna limit the number of booths, those tables, everybody went to them last time they had them up, so...
Yeah, there are very few people using the booths.
Yeah, very few people at all, they really like those walk-up tables.
So, all of the equipment is now in storage at the, no, it's not. Where is it?
Still at the school.
Library?
No, it's at the school.
How about the plexi?
Everything is at the school, everything's at the school, yeah.
Okay.
So, when you move it back this time, it'll go into the storage container?
Nope. I'm having some trouble with that container.
Okay.
I've contacted the company regarding it, because of the time of year it came, the ground isn't as level as it should be, according to the gentleman who dropped it off, we can't quite get the door shut 100%.
Oh.
So, I contacted them, let them know that we're having an issue with it, and that as soon as the ground softens up and we can re-level it, I think it's just out of level, so it's, it's not, like one corner's off and the other corner's off, so it's not allowing the door to shut correctly.
This is fairly rigid though, isn't it?
Yeah, but they still flex, they gotta flex, so they tear themselves apart.
It's not that big a deal though, because we have another election coming up in another six weeks or so.
Okay.
And once, once that container, we're 100% sure that we can close it, and then we'll get some locks so it can be locked, and then you guys will have keys, we'll have a set of keys there, and then we'll be good, we'll load it up, that's no problem.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we get that situation taken care of.
Yeah, we just, it's just been, we can't get that door closed 100%, but we paid for the container. Yeah, and they're, they're aware of it, I have an email confirmation, when I talked to the woman, via email, so they're aware of it. And they said absolutely let us know if there's a, you know, if it doesn't straighten out, to let them know, so...
Right.
Let me help it greeter, as you're thinking about who will stand in for you, someone who'll be good as a greeter.
Anything, anything you have, Lynda, for us as well?
I just wanted to ask that, if you all are gonna be appointing a pro tem to cover for you, if you'd let me know, I'll get the papers made up ahead of time.
Working towards that goal.
Okay, good. If you could just pop me an email, and I can always do that on Monday.
Just working towards that goal, it's maybe difficult.
All righty, and far as meals go, I'm gonna look at that menu and just take a couple sections, and I'll be emailing everybody who's going to work and asking you to get your order to me, I have to place that 24 hours in advance with Constantly Pizza, give them time to prep for it.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have for this election, did you mention the trustee of the trust funds? It's not really about this election, but...
Well, it's not official, he hasn't given it to me and it's still...
Oh, then we can wait a month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a potential resignation, but I have not received it yet, so I get that all the time, she gets it, she needs something in writing.
Okay. Just one, one correction, you are correct, Lynda, that's my dad, I forgot, he did put some stuff over there, some stuff that didn't come here, but...
Okay.
My dad, sorry.
No worries.
That's all right. And you had somebody sign up as a temp person for the school board as well, right? That's I'll take care of.
The school clerk.
School clerk.
Yes, and I just found out that that person has decided not to do it or can't do it.
Oh.
So, Kayla has gotten somebody else that she feels will be more reliable, I've already delivered the next appointment paper to Kayla, she's going to sign it and get it back to me, and, well, actually, she's gonna sign it and the fill-in's gonna bring it right to you on Saturday.
Okay.
For the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in, giving us the update, and we'll see you then.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Well, a quick question, are you gonna do a pro temp for any part of the day for yourself?
I'm gonna try to, because I, I wanna check it out.
I was gonna say that.
I'm just checking. Could you be my pro temp for about an hour at noon time?
That would be on the, yeah, yeah. How much does it pay?
You might be disappointed there.
All right, it's off my, it's on my off time, so it should be more.
Yeah, but it'd be $10.99, you're twice, so...
Take it.
Yeah, well, just that short term, I don't think it's a big deal.
I'm just gonna run it, because I, just keeping track, because she's going for her biopsy the next day, I gotta take her there.
I can, I can, I can.
Okay, I've got a couple of checks here. I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-B, Roman normal three, paragraph B, to accept fundraising for WAD from sponsors for FIA LLC for $350 and Granite State Telephone for $350, for a total of $700, and that's for Reese Across Dunbarton, and I have a copy of those checks here from both of them.
A second motion.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I wanna thank the sponsors as well as, I think, Don Larson for getting these checks together for us, not a big amount of money, and those are very positive things to have for Reese Across Dunbarton. Don isn't here, out back there?
Nope, he actually just wanted to, he sent his request in an email.
Okay.
He will be here next week, though.
All right, I have a request from Don Larson here and the garden club, they're looking to put two banners, the community center wall, above the bleachers, he's hung the Dunbarton, Reese Across Dunbarton banners here before for the last two years, with permission from Shelley at the school office, Westonberger, both banners are town-related One is for the Dunbarton Town Hall project and Reese Across Dunbar, and he'd like to put those banners up. I would think that shouldn't be a big issue if he's just gonna put the banners up.
I think he's following up because he was instructed to do so before he does any kind of...
You guys okay with that, Bob?
Well, yeah, does it, does it affect the school also?
Isn't it affecting? He said above the, above the bleachers.
Yeah, we're share, well, it's, they're in charge of the community center.
Okay, she, he said, did say that...
Well, I think the reasoning is that, Bob, because we told them not to have any booths where people can congregate on.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
I heard the day that we were in the gym.
Oh.
That the community center, the school's in charge of.
Okay.
So, he needs to find out from the school if it's proper, because we could say yes, and he'll be putting them up, and someone will say, "What are you doing?" You know?
So, as far as the...
He doesn't want to step on anybody's toes.
As far as the selectmen go, we don't have an issue with it.
And then just make sure he's got permission from the school?
All right.
Yeah, I would, that's what I would do.
He's, he's gonna patch something to the wall, I don't want it to have to take off paint and be responsible for paint repair.
Now, I'd like to go over the town warrants and discuss which selectmen will be the backups for those if the department heads won't be speaking to them themselves. Let's go right to Article 4, because that's where the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of taxation. I guess I will speak to that, being the chair. So, Mike, you'll be my backup, you think?
Yeah, I'll be your backup.
So, Dave slash Mike on that one, and...
So, Dave, the next article is the capital reserve deposit for the revow.
Yeah.
I did get a call from Mary LaValle on Monday, she asked that the board speak on her behalf.
Yeah.
Because of her health and age, she did not feel comfortable going to this type of meeting and would not be present.
I can be principal, Dave, if you want.
Okay.
And I'll be backup.
Okay, Mike slash Bob, that should be an easy one. Transfer station, Woody, you'll be speaking with transfer station, so I'll put Woody... And I'll be the backup on that, I guess. Fire department will be John Wigan most likely, so I'll put John.
I can be a backup on that one.
And Mike will be the backup. And the second one again is gonna be John, you wanna be the backup on the second one, Bob, or?
Sure.
Or I might do both of them, whichever one, whatever you guys decide. Okay, we'll put Bob on that one. Please, Cruiser, be you, Chris?
Sure.
I think, and just so you remember to do this, he's not a resident, so you guys will have to ask the moderator to give him permission.
Okay.
And that came from the chief, he asked that he speak on his behalf, because he[1764.32] And that came from the chief, he asked that he speak on his behalf, because he would not be available to do that.
To speak on behalf. Non-resident.
He can set up a tent and live in a squatter for you.
Again, we'll have Chris do this next one for the ten thousand dollars and I'll be the backup on that one. Chris. And Dave, I did the state, but I guess I'll be the backup on the police chief in case they start throwing stuff on you on the vehicle as well. Okay, fifteen thousand for highway vehicle capital. Deal rate, so we'll put Jeff. And who wants to back that one?
I'll, I'll back them up.
Okay, Bob. And that's a pretty low amount this year because we got pretty well caught up on that one, so. And again, he's going to do the hundred thousand dollar standing for the road, so I'll put Jeff, you want to finish that one too, Bob?
Sure.
Get that department done. Okay.
Don did say he was going to speak on this.
It'll be Don Larson. And I guess I will do that only because I think you guys voted against it, so I'll be a backup on it, right?
We may, I may even have an, for an option to speak against it.
Okay. Come on, Dave.
And Dave, I know Bob wanted that, Bob, you may want to speak against it too?
Uh, yeah, if need be, I certainly will.
Okay, so we all can speak to something against or for if we wanted to. I guess we'll put Don and Dave on all three of these and then we'll.
It's this one, yeah.
The first two, I think, are what you guys voted against, right?
The first one. Just the first one.
Just the first one?
Just the first one, yeah. I guess it's on the next page, Dave.
Oh, yeah.
Does Don know how we feel, how we voted?
Yes.
Okay.
Put Don and Dave on there. And the last one. The Mill Foil, he's not going to be here, Mike, you want to speak to the Mill Foil?
Sure.
Okay. So we just put Mike and we'll put.
You know, back them up.
Okay, put you as a backup.
If he loses his voice.
Okay.
Play Boston. You know, the COVID going around, you don't know.
Okay, and you think you might have an amendment coming in on the article number four, so?
Article four, I don't know, the gentleman who's going to present it came to me, he said he's got a major medical appointment that day in Boston, he would not be able to make it that day, he's looking for an attorney speaker, so I'll alert you if these, if I get approached, okay?
Okay.
I have not been approached yet.
Mike, you said there was an update on Kelsey Road survey?
Uh, in this past week, we got a, a report from the surveyors who laid out Kelsey Road for us. It's been distributed to the planning board because it was their request. And it was reviewed by Bob and myself. And currently, it's going to be, it's also being sent to the applicant as I promised in the middle of the conceptual. Dave, it was not sent to you because you're an inviter, however, it is available to you and any other inviter who wishes to get a complete copy of that, please just make a request to lean and we can have that immediately sent to you electronically or by paper.
Okay, the, the only problem I have, Mike, is we have a decision back from him and only half the information was provided to him. Lena just gave her a book that was put on the counter there that had our latest court case with the town and all the road issues in it. And that wasn't provided to him, which is a fairly substantial volume of.
I would, I would recommend.
As big as that first one.
I would recommend that before any decisions made, that you have concerns on it, please read the report, it's quite thorough. I thought they did a good job historically going back. And as far as I'm concerned, it established some boundaries, but it didn't change the fact that the applicant has got some, has got to do some upgrading of the road. And to achieve the appropriate road frontage for his subdivision. And it's in the, it's in the planning board's court right now. I, I don't think, it really didn't change my perspective at all as far as what the applicant needs to do, because regardless of the road going east, west, or south, the road needs to be upgraded as in any other subdivision in town.
Yeah.
And I think that was clear as day in the report. And because they demarcated along, if you know the the road going suddenly to Gostown, to me, it doesn't, it didn't matter to me. If he's going to create an extension of Kelsey Road or as a, as a, as a new road, as an extension, whatever the planning board deems necessary, that road will have to be brought up to standards, as with any subdivision in town. And right now, I'm leaning at the planning board level, I was happy with the report. Please review it, if you've got concerns, I'd say next week bring it up to us and we can, if there's any major concerns, we can pass it back to the. But I think it's, in your capacity, you'll be as invited to.
Right, and I just want to state that for the record, this board is the one that requested that.
Yes.
Because of the situations that we were having going on with plowing and everything else, it wasn't requested by the planning board.
Oh, the planning board.
They were on board with us doing it, but it was a request from this board at a public meeting.
Right.
And the fact is, we were supposed to give him all of the information from our two court cases with it, we failed to do that. We gave him half the information from, we actually gave him information from a court case that was in two thousand and seven and had nothing to do with the town. So this latest court case, he's had no information to look at on. So I'd like to make sure he has a chance to review that information, so. I do know, because Lena and I talked about it, it might not be right correct. We went to our town attorney, he said he couldn't remember the file or didn't know where it was, it's probably at his last law firm since he moved. And so I had to provide my own copy back to the town, so by the time I dug it out and got it here.
Yeah, my, my point was, I don't know what our surveyor, what he got to see and didn't see.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just looking at his response to what we requested from him.
Yeah. And I'll redo it, I'll bring it to you guys next week and we'll have Lena keep that book here till next week and. But I would think that if we're going to have a response from our surveyor, he should at least be able to see all the documentation on it, so that's where I'm coming from on that.
Okay.
Okay, does that sound good, thank you, Mike? Going back now.
I encourage you to at least get a copy of the report sent to you.
Yeah. Mailbox items. We have a letter here from Bob Leonard stating that he would not be able to attend the March meeting as Lena just told us about over COVID nineteen. Exposure concerns, he's in the high-risk category. So we're at Article sixteen, the board of selectmen will respectfully take up that form. We, we have a signature that's required for a new employee. The policy you said for criminal records here? Or is that something we have to talk about?
Background checks.
Um, that was something that had been, oh, yes, we had discussed it last week when we went through the process of hiring.
Yeah.
Chris Remler had provided us with a policy that he felt was important for the town to put in place. And you guys made a motion last week to go with this, go forward with this background check policy.
Yeah, you didn't say you wanted background checked on it.
Yeah, and so it's just a matter of signing, because your motion stood last week, they just need you to sign the documents for my record.
Okay, please go, Michael. We got a pretty late mailbox this week. That's it.
Did you guys sign that?
Oh, we do have to sign this, yeah.
There's a four, three.
And then we'll have to sign the way to pay afterwards, or you want to do that now?
I signed it, three.
Oh, it is up top, yeah. Bob, here's one more signature for you. Okay, I'll bring it back for public comment. Nothing, and because most of the people will be gone later, lean, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lee.
Just a couple of quick comments or questions actually. I turned in a, a couple of quotes a few months back, one for the roof at the transfer.
Yeah.
And one for some tree removal.
Yeah.
Didn't know how we stood, because the roof, we're losing more shingles every day, now with this wind, we're losing even more. And the trees, one of them is a hazard to people coming in to transfer.
Yeah.
If it, depending on if that leader, they call it leader breaks off, it's either going to land in seventy-seven or it's going to land on somebody at the gate. And the other one is right at the wires, but it's not, not real close to the wires, but if it decides to come down, it will take our wires down inside. And the other one was just to prune that crab apple tree out, get that cleaned up, that was what that quote was, and then there was a quote for the, to get that little attendant shed roof taken care of, so.
I remember the roof one and I saw that, I didn't remember the pruning and tree one, do you?
I don't remember.
We've got a copy in the office.
Do you remember the common value about what it was?
Think it was a thousand to do the trees and I forget what it was to do the roof, I think that was like five hundred.
Yeah, it wasn't much for something, but.
I'll be, that's a good answer. So the roof, as soon as he's, I'm very happy with the roof, that's reasonable cost. And the trees, tree trees we're talking about?
Yes.
Is it pruning? That's still, that's a very reasonable cost too.
Yeah. Basically, what they're going to do is just come in, lap everything down, we're going to grab it with our grapple and run it to the brush pile so we don't have to pay labor for them to chip it up.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, you have a consensus from the board to go ahead and do those.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you for coming in, Woody.
We will see you Monday for sure.
Oh, yeah. Bringing it to lean, do you have anything that you want for public meeting? Bob, do you have anything that you want for the public meeting?
No, no other I can think of right now.
Mike, you're good. Okay. Mike, why don't you make a motion to go into non-public?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha, paragraph three, Roman numeral two, sub-paragraph C, at the request of Sergeant Raymond.